The twenty twenty-five Capitol or Police, Fire Service and City Hall. Two weeks from today, we will have family wreck streets and our proposed twenty-five, twenty, twenty twenty-five debt. And then October twenty-fourth, we'll have the operating budget because I want to have nine months of solid numbers to go off of to project for next year, next year's budget. So on to the first handout page, which would be the Police Department. It's page six just because that's page six of the overall Capitol plan. We, you know, anything highlighted in yellow falls under the planned Capitol program. So we're setting aside money for copier effects on an annual basis. So whenever Kyle thinks that needs to be replaced, we have money to do so. The nine one one system upgrade, Chief and I talked about this yesterday in my office. We've been putting money aside and there's a potential that the county might provide the hardware slash software for this.
We're exploring options now as Jeff knows. I don't have any when I call you every time.
You don't have points for mine?
Yours?
Oh, okay.
So, and, uh, cause now they're cutting our, they cut our funding. We were giving PSAP money, so it was kind of supplementing this and it was good for the city. They changed the structure of the funding. They're kind of putting that money in the costs, or so to speak. And what we're being told now, at least the initial plan, if you've heard something different, please let me know, is PSAPs in the county that are willing to join the county hosted system, if you're over ten thousand calls, they'll supply you with three answering positions, which we currently have now. If you're under ten thousand, they will pay for two. We're currently about eighty-five hundred calls, eighty-two, eighty-five depending throughout the years. So we, the county as of now, will be funding this, but it's not a guarantee, so we need to keep saving in case they fall short, because we got about another, maybe two years if we're lucky on the system we have.
Okay. But they would only fund two of our three positions?
Yes.
Would we have to make up the difference then?
But the, the actual position itself isn't worth the real call. I mean, it's significant, but it's not like the, the system we have now where we're hosting our own. That's really, the hosted portion is a significant price.
Okay. So we're open to going to the hosted solution?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know that.
And it's a Vesta. It's exactly what we have now. We could host the entire county with what we have.
Okay.
But if they're willing to pay for and maintain it long run, it's gonna be a good option. We were hoping they would go in this direction, and when we bought our Vesta, the, it's a Motorola thing. Motorola, basically, you could buy your standalone for eighty, ninety grand, or you can go on the hosted system, but we're gonna sell you the console for eighty or ninety grand anyway. So, and it's like, why pay for the communication back and forth every month? So we need to keep socket money away until we find out what this is gonna be, but hopefully it's gonna work out for us.
Yeah. So we started last year fifteen thousand police and fifteen thousand in fire, so thirty thousand a year to sock away for those needs.
In twenty-six or twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then mobile, mobile, now, I watched a movie the other day and they called it mobile digital terminals.
It's mobile data. It's been mobile data terminals for five years probably.
Can't believe it. No, you can't believe Hollywood. So we're putting money away for MDTs. Shields, we already have, I think, three or four shields.
We have, well, we have three of that type.
Yeah.
And we have one heavier ballistic shield.
Okay.
We'd like to get four more.
Yeah. So that's what that is for next year. Dash cams would be a two-year buy in twenty-six, starting to put money away in twenty twenty-five. Uh, SRO vehicle, we have one, this would be for the second, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And we still only have one SRO, correct?
Well, we have two SROs, but currently because of manpower, they're both alternating to the high school because I need them in the afternoons to work the road.
Okay.
So they work to school from six to two and then two to six, they work the road.
Okay.
What is the computerated dispatch?
That's our CAD system. We're in the process here, we've met with different vendors, uh, we're looking at different options out there to see where we're gonna move theirs. The one we're really excited on, at least the concept of, is Axon. And we were told that it would be up and running by now, and it's not, it's still a concept, because we're, we're looking at body cams, we're looking at in-car. Axon provides the whole thing that we connect all together, but their CAD system is still, it, it's a concept, nothing more at that point, at this point, so.
Just a concept?
Yeah, I get it.
Concept of a plant. So you're just hoping to lease, lease it in twenty?
This will be a buy.
Would it be a lease-to-buy?
Lease-to-buy?
Spread over, I think it's five years.
Did, I'm just throwing this out there, is there an option to go to the county and become a part of whatever the county is using that their?
We got all kinds of options.
Yeah.
Um, and there's, I mean, there's a lot to this, you know?
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Most other people in the area are going with Motorola.
Okay. Do you think this price is fair for now to leave at five hundred? Okay. Uh, and then the other big purple item is to replace the cars that we just bought in twenty twenty-eight.
And that puts them on what kind of rotation?
Uh, five-year rotation. Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's a good type.
But.
Yeah, really.
Of the fifteen that we bought, we only need to replace ten or eleven.
Yeah. Because if we, staff vehicles, detective cars, all that, they'll last a lot longer than a, a road car will. The road cars definitely take some abuse.
And then the bottom area is just money that we get in for, you know, a drug-related offense, or if we're involved in a federal investigation, it has some payout to it. So we set aside an appropriation. Chief usually uses it for training purposes.
What do we pay, what are, what are we, what are we currently paying for these eleven cars? Is that, how much of a jump is that to one point two million in twenty twenty-eight?
Well, completely outfitted, I think we're around fifty.
Well, we spent one point two in this last batch.
Okay.
So.
Was that fifteen or, or eleven?
It was actually sixteen if we count the SRO car. But when, when we come up to twenty-eight, we're not gonna have to replace all those vehicles. We will have to outfit them, and the price of everything goes up every, you know.
Are we able to take gear from them and re, reprocess that?
For the longest time, when Ford had the police interceptor, they never changed the style. We could take the cage, everything right out. Now, they changed the style. We're buying new cages, new, nothing fits, you know? So if they don't change the style, if they're happy with their design, it'll be fine.
It's a hundred and nine per vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
Totally outfitted. I don't think it's more than we would need, but it's better.
Well, I no doubt that the price is gonna go up.
Yeah, no, no.
I was just wondering how much it's gonna go up.
Yeah. But I think it's, I think it's enough.
And if we're really lucky and they don't change the design, that will be significantly lower, because we won't have to buy all new equipment. I mean, the consoles and the cages, even light bars, some don't fit on the new design sometimes.
But it's depending on you buying the same type of car, right?
And if the manufacturer has.
Yeah, the manufacturer still has them, yeah.
You know, and the Fords, after a long time, they finally put a different pump.
Yeah.
Where the transmission for the rear wheel back in the day and it, I mean, it's good.
You got everything?
Yeah.
Do you think we'll be able to get a little more for when we sell them? Because we're doing such a good job of turning them over. Now they're not gonna be twenty-year-old cars when we turn them over.
Well, still, five years, I mean, we've got a decent price on them now, but five years is a long time for a patrol car.
Okay. A lot of miles or a lot of engine hours.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
It's not just miles and hours.
Yes, exactly.
Which we track.
That's just, that's, that's a big expense, but it's nice to see it all written out and ready to go.
Right. Uh, so on to the next page, which does not have a number, because it's a part of a larger page. Uh, so I just printed out the section that deals with police. This is money that we're able to set aside each year for upgrades here at the City Hall. Not that we're gonna need carpeting replaced anytime soon, because we, we did a lot of that recently, but it's good to set money aside, you know, in case, you know, for the next time around. Community flock cameras, we currently have six. We're thinking of, the Chief and I, when we met, maybe adding two more. So I'd have to bump up twenty twenty-five and beyond by five thousand a year. Highland.
Actually, John, remember we talked that the, the five thousand is.
Oh, it's gonna be three thousand.
Camera for five years, any new cameras we get are three thousand.
Three thousand, yeah.
Kyle?
Wow.
Yeah. That's the, is it all I wanted to do to tell us?
We locked it in for a five-year contract, they'll keep this price. Any new cameras we get is at the new price now.
Okay. So Highland, just west of Valley View, you mentioned, and South Bedford, just north of the high school, would be the two locations the Chief's looking at. And that's it for the police. If anyone else has questions for the Chief.
Okay. Fire?
I do have a quick question.
Yeah.
It's a real easy one. The five hundred thousand dollars for the CAD, that's all on us, right? The, the contracts we're in for fire dispatch, don't recover that?
No, the contracts do have a portion there that talks about the upgrades to dispatch equipment.
Yeah.
But it's, it's complicated also, because they're gonna have to spend money also to have their in-house record service changed, if we go to something different, you know? So there's a lot on the table, but, yeah. I mean, they are on the hook for a portion of it.
All right. So Fire Department, uh, vehicle for the Chief would be next year, the second, the second year of two years, replacing it two thousand and fifteen. So kind of get an idea how much longer the administrative vehicles last, or so, one that's used on a daily basis.
Yeah.
Uh, utility drone van. Chief, if you want, talk briefly about the drone van.
Excuse me. Yeah, currently all the drones, and we have multiples, I just took in two new ones, some donated. Drone team is very active, they get called out a lot. Last week they were called out twice, and I'm done. A lot of law enforcement. And I witnessed, we got a call a few weeks ago, it was right near the end of business, three-thirty, dispatch gets a call that a three-year-old boy walked away from a daycare less than ten minutes ago. And I'm witnessing my guys running from where the drones are stored, to throw them in a vehicle, and people are screaming, hey, don't forget this, hey, don't forget that. It's like, you know, with this stuff, with a vehicle plugged in, everything is charged, you get a call like that, boom, they're on the road, so they can locate this three-year-old kid before something tragic would happen, instead of spending ten minutes to load it up. Now, I will tell you, I told them to look into vehicle, get some ideas, they found a commercially available drone vehicle. I laughed when they told me, they didn't have a price. And they got a price, and it was two hundred and twenty-five thousand or two hundred and seventy-five thousand. We're talking about potentially buying a van, there's a company in Richfield that lays out our fire trucks for us, they weld plastic, and we already had a preliminary discussion with them, and doing a lot of the work ourselves, us, service, this company. So we would end up with something similar to that, commercially available vehicle for finalizing.
Have you looked into grants for this, since it's such a regional service that you guys are providing?
We're not aware of any grants for, for drones. The county team, they don't have any vehicles at this point. They're talking that maybe in the future, but right now it's the county drone team is an infancy, still drone.
Unless there's evolved.
Oh.
In an insane way.
Yeah.
I know you hear it, because you call the drone team.
All the time.
At least what, once or twice a week.
It paid for itself, at least.
Yeah. You, you gotta outfit the truck with lettering that says aviation unit.
Aviation unit.
Yeah.
Air one. Everybody flight jacket three?
Air flight.
This would also give them a place to put some screens and hack this.
Oh, absolutely.
As a command post, so they'd be a little more.
Instead of standing in the sun?
Yeah, they don't, they don't have a home as a home base, and I think they're, they've, they've grown into a force. I mean, they're bigger than the county. You guys are, you guys are setting the tone for the entire county. I think it's definitely needed.
We're gonna get old Winnebago for you, man. Things going.
Do you like breaking bad?
Exactly. Well, on a side note, I, I called Dan after the last meeting, or whatever meeting it was, and you guys authorized the sale of that, because he got the wrong year in it, because it's like a nineteen ninety-seven, I believe.
Yeah, apparently.
And they had it listed as like an oh eight or something.
Yeah.
And he got the wrong year, my buddy. So.
Did you want it?
No. We did.
But served you guys well. Think it'd be a good drone?
Yeah.
Some police partner.
So then, uh.
Do you want a?
Need a question?
Yeah.
More and more building departments are going to use drones to do inspections, especially if they have, you know, inspection on steep roofs and stuff. Uh, I hope each would got some, if you're in a community, would we be able to utilize your equipment if we ever needed to? One of your.
Yeah, they have to qualify like our pilots do, which is.
No, no, we put, give you one of our pilots to do it.
I think I have to.
Just give it to me.
All right.
Why? Give it to me, it'll be me for hire. I'll make it go all over the place.
You're gonna be like, that looks cool.
I'll inspect the whole county.
It's hard to control it, but. Just a few more items here for fire. A utility pickup to be bought in twenty-six, the turnout gear, which is an annual thing, the nine one one system that we talked about, Capitol needs that we do annually, and the copier effects that we talked about, so we do that for every department. And then on the next page, again, that numbered because it's a part of a larger page. The main item here is senior center upgrades, that just seems to be getting more and more popular. And, and this is mainly kitchen equipment?
Kitchen, the game room, um, all those rooms are being used, they're getting filled up, but this just needs an upgrade. That's more than enough to get it done.
Okay.
So that was?
That's actually for this year, but there'll be an amendment coming up.
Okay.
During, during my second amendment in October.
Gotcha.
All right.
Well, twenty twenty-eight's gonna be a beefy year for police and fire.
Yeah. Luckily, it's lease-to-buy.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. But it's replacing some that are falling off too, so.
Okay.
You'll see that in that depth of service. So on to service, a couple more dodges, begrudgingly, because somebody likes him.
It's not me. We'd buy a Chevy.
They do have a mechanic on staff who is very well-versed in the Mopar products, so it makes complete logical sense to get something that he's versed in.
Is he versed in them because they're broken all the time?
Oh, they.
I'm sorry.
Because it was a funny joke.
Joke, too easy.
Yeah. Yeah, I had a couple tease up on that one.
They write themselves.
That's right. So then, a flatbed tanker for watering flowers. Briefly talk about that because of how it, how it would change how we do it now.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really nothing different than how we do it now, but we are currently using it, like, the only tank that we have, um, to water flowers, but we want to use that as a brine tank, basically, to be able to brine the roads. Once we put brine in that, we'll never be able to go back, and we'll, you'll never be able to water flowers like we did, because you'll kill the flowers, so.
That would be, that would be something. I'm glad you thought of that ahead of time, Dave.
So, we're going to put this, like, a dedicated tank, watering tank, on a roll-off flatbed, that way we'll be able to unload it and load it when we need it, as we need it, and we can switch it out for a salt bed, or switch it out for a dump truck, or a leaf box, or whatever, because we're buying all hookos now, which makes all our trucks really versatile.
Okay.
Does this make it safer for the guys too? It's a pretty scary question, going down on the water things, how they're doing it now. Would this make it safer for them? People don't pay attention, and I don't, I don't go see them.
They're trained, they're trained in traffic control, so that's, they're not gonna put that thing on the road if it's not safe.
And I think they, you just had a safety class today for.
We did have a traffic control safety class today.
So, and then two leaf vac, Toby Hines, that'll be the continuing program to replace all of our leaf, leaf vacs with, uh.
Can't we get a drone for water?
Yeah. It's a good idea.
That's safe for.
It is.
I mean, we got time.
And then the service for, we all know, the next page is what we're on the agenda tonight. We're gonna demo the, the building and continue our process to hopefully build a new service center complex in twenty twenty-six.
So you have saved three years' cash?
Mm-hmm.
And then, then lease to borrow the rest?
And we also, and we already have some saved cash.
Mm-hmm.
So about a million probably.
So we gotta borrow.
So by twenty twenty-six, to borrow?
Twelve and a half million.
Well, we're hopefully estimating high.
Mm-hmm.
I like to estimate high.
Well, we, the architects that we have, Vialoski, may remember, estimated the demolition of the building at eight hundred. In our legislation today, the lowest bid was two forty-five.
Wow.
So I thought it was high, that's why we're just trying to be cautious here. It's like the cost of everything you know is skyrocketing.
So we don't, based on this plan, we wouldn't break ground till twenty-six? Or we break ground?
Uh, they will be demoing that building probably within the next thirty days.
Maybe when they start the new one.
Next year.
Okay.
We hope the, the process is complicated, because there's a lot of legalities, because it's a design build, but we're, we're gonna work through it. We're gonna start moving on that pretty quickly.
Yeah, so the borrowing job would mainly, might take place in January, February of twenty-six.
Okay.
And the cash we have set aside would take care of the early costs.
Oh, until January?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay.
So what's the expected life of borrowing for the building?
I think twenty is all we can do for a building, but I'll double-check with.
Twenty years?
Yeah. Usually you don't wanna go out longer than that, even though the life of the building is.
So the expected life of the building is fifty years, and you expect twenty-five?
Twenty. Twenty for the borrowing, or twenty-five probably max is all you, all you can go. And we'll probably get numbers on both.
Okay.
Hopefully by then, rates will drop a little bit.
The freshmen will be in college by then. Well, they'll be married by twenty.
So then we're in the City Hall. Building department, there's an annual retention and storage. A second vehicle for the assistant, who we've got to hire, so sometime in the next four months, we could, you know, we could buy that in January, February, and be ready to go. Again, the IT, the copiers, and then Kyle, we set aside money every year for network storage, virtual servers, which means they're not on-site, right?
No, it means that they don't exist physically. Instead of having a single box that is a single server, I have a group, a node of multiple boxes that host eighteen virtual servers.
Darn. But if they're virtual, why are we paying for them?
We are paying for the hardware, so that we can.
We're paying, we're paying for them in Bit.ly.
Build as many fish bowls as we would like. I know, I know.
He's like, the only other guy.
He's playing.
The only guy that knows.
Yeah, that's right.
Hey, I'm in IT, I know.
Yeah. So then that's page five, which I think is more close to our last page. I two solutions, which is what, you know, we created, the technology fund, Fund One Oh Six. It's a bump up in twenty-five and twenty-six, because we're gonna be getting building software and.
And everything's more expensive.
Yeah.
Does stuff, does everything IT related go under your budget? Like, do we buy routers for the rec center? Is that the rec center for you? Okay.
No, and it's not through here. He also has in the general fund.
Okay.
Money, money set aside for computer maintenance type items. Nothing too exciting. The court filing system, that's in process, right? And this is more of a maintenance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's, I'm looking at moving forward with that. They're in the process of digitizing their old records, and then any new records as they're created are being scanned into the system. So we're no longer creating paper records, we're just trying to get rid of the paper records in the rears, and we're going, we are all digital moving forward. So they have an integration that allows them to pull a case up in their software and then view any supporting scan documents, um, right there on their machines. It's all browser-based, so they don't need any special software, and I think everybody down there's been happy with it so far.
Yeah. Looks good from a clutter standpoint.
Clutter standpoint.
Not that I care about clutter.
So the heat pumps?
The heat pumps, yes. So.
We just had the duck, and we're still paying for them.
Yeah, so this is, yeah, well, we pay for them as we replace and repair them, so most of them in this building have been taken care of. I don't think we're gonna need the hundred thirty, all of it?
Yeah, I felt there was only maybe one left.
Yeah. So.
Two that didn't want it.
Just was a timing thing, didn't know how long it was gonna take and how many were gonna fail, but hopefully we can reduce that number and not, you know, it's appropriated, you don't have to spend it, so. Parking lot, Joey and I meet monthly. He's not here, he's just walking in. And we all see it on a monthly basis, and it's due, but it's not critical that it happens next year, so, uh, we felt twenty twenty-six was a good spot for that, because we, you know, we just spent over seven hundred some thousand in cash to, to improve on with. And I haven't seen it yet, but I heard it's really nice.
Are those, are those on the road program or not? Are they, they're own budget?
Their own budget, yep.
Both on with and here?
Yes.
We also have the City Hall type upgrades, this is obviously up to you guys to decide, but the, the chairs that we have have become odiferous, and they're at a point where I don't know that we can do much more with them, so we've been looking into maybe reupholstering these chairs or replace them, we don't really know yet, but then also, we, we all know we have a, a space problem here with fitting everyone, and, and some of that stuff's peeling off, we're gonna look into some cost for that too, so we'll, I'll present that once we get closer.
Are you thinking reface it or redo the whole?
We, we have, the space issue is the problem, because we looked in the veneer, you can't find that.
Right.
So I don't know if we could rip that off, keep the bones there, and put something on front of it, but we have to extend it back out.
Right.
So that's what we're gonna look into. It hasn't been a high priority, but I want to always bring it to your attention, because we've been talking about it. All of our directors can't even fit over there, so it's, we're kinda doing it, the tables over there are kinda wonky, we've seen better days.
So that, there's not a plan for that, though?
I'm just bringing it to your attention, I will be bringing it at some point in the next year or so.
Maybe the heat pump money.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
If you guys can stay cold, we can get a nice fixed-up console chambers. All right.
That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rares.
You're welcome.
We have two minutes before the web session.
Tony's been on that search, by the way, on the chair search.
Charlie, are you ready? Jan? All right. It was Corinne's deep chops?
Yeah, trust that.
All right, everyone, let's jump into the work session here. First, we have ordinance forty-three. I was gonna tailor this this week just because Mr. Ventura is not here. But I talked to him today and he said, go ahead and do it. So Jeff, if you would please sponsor to do that? No, we're gonna, we're gonna go through and do it.
Oh, yeah, I'll try your one.
No, and I'll, I'll second it. Do we have any further questions or discussions on this? I think Chief Yakupovish gave a pretty good description of why it was needed and how it can be carried out last week. All right, then moving on to new stuff, sixty-three. This is a little housekeeping about the code, the printed code and the online code.
Yeah, so the codifier, American legal requested that this go through, which you typically only do at the end of the year, but we're gonna make a transition basically to have our online code updated every three months instead of once a year. Because the fact of the matter is that's where people are going most of the time now, especially residents. It's an easy way for residents to go online and see what the current code is. So this helps transition us into that quarterly update instead of annual.
Do we have to approve it quarterly going forward?
Okay.
I would aspire to do it.
At least I don't think so.
Once a year.
Wouldn't it be instantaneous?
Well, you can't read all those numbers anyhow, but if you want to reveal, it makes it more easier.
Absolutely.
We've had instances where people tried to talk about that and say, well, it's right here in your code. And we said, well, it's not right because it hasn't been updated, so this just rectifies that problem.
So Mr. Hoover says they may want us to pass this quarterly for the online update, but the physical books, I think we'd only ask to do once a year, right?
Correct, and there's no price increase, it's the same, just gonna be split quarterly.
So basically it's just to make our online code a little bit more effective.
Which helps anyhow because if the resident wants to look it up, they can look it up. They don't have to come to John and John's searching through forty-seven files to find the most...
And they're not gonna, they're not gonna know to say, they're not gonna know like, hey, I found this thing online. Maybe it was updated since the last year, so yeah, that's the best way to do it. So let's do this one, two, three, so we can get this going and get this plan running. Any further questions on that one? All right, next is for the demolition project. Mayor, you wanna talk about that?
So basically what I said earlier, the architect's estimate was eight hundred thousand. Came in at two forty-five with Eagle, I believe is the name of the company.
Correct.
And they're ready to go, so if you guys pass this today, I'm asking you to, we can get moving pretty quickly.
Kickoff meeting is gonna happen next week if we pass this tonight.
I'm doing my best to get this building moving forward and getting this thing done. And this is the first huge step outside of the legalities and all the stuff we've done to this point, so.
Mr. Giladi, did you, were you surprised at how different the pricing was between Eagle and the others?
It is, well, it's a wide range of pricing. So that is a little bit surprising, but it's kind of an even spread if you look at the, the numbers that came in. It's not a situation where Eagle bid two forty-five and everybody else bid six hundred. That would be a red flag, but we have two forty-five, two sixty-five, two eighty-something, and then some in the threes and some in the fours and all the way up. So that leads me to believe that we received legitimate and very good pricing.
All right.
Have they removed the entire building or just portions?
They're gonna move the entire building, we're gonna recycle a lot of the materials there that we can use for fill. So that's part of the bid packet too. It won't do it in its entirety, but it's definitely gonna help save us money down the line.
So we're taking the building down and rebuilding the surface, correct? Even though the original intent was to take this for free and just renovate, now we're going to take it down and build it?
Well, remember the study that we did with Bielowski kind of showed that that building would not support that operation. A lot of things in there, like the concrete as an example, needed to be eight to twelve inches thick, right?
It's only four.
It's four inches thick.
Too many columns.
And this, that with the five and ten-ton pile trucks trying to maneuver around all the supports inside the building made me very anxious, but the concrete alone was astronomical to get that corrected. But we didn't know that until they went in. Again, the study kind of showed us what we needed to find out.
But don't forget also, the original, original plan was a whole brand-new building anyway, so we still got the land for the cost of the building, which was a dollar.
Arguably better location.
Yeah.
Central.
Definitely better.
Central.
Yeah, the people across the street are thrilled.
And we're thinking about them too with the design, like I think I mentioned this before, we're gonna try and keep everything in the back and it's gonna be a one-way in and a one-way out, so it should be not too bad for the folks that live over there.
And you're not building a basketball court, which you said you were gonna do with the old building.
We were thinking if there's enough space, we can make it versatile, but that kind of fell to much of the appease of someone in the room, I won't name, it was, it was a grand thought.
Well, there was a lot of extra space in the old building and there won't be extra space in the new building.
What's the size of that?
Fifty thousand square feet?
I'm sorry, what's the... What's the size of the lot that we have?
Oh, the lot.
Oh, the lots?
Yeah.
The lot also was five or six feet.
Oh, okay.
The building is eating up.
I think it's a big change.
I'll let you set the square footage.
No, I'm curious how much area you have to build.
It's, it's efficient, it leaves room for growth.
There's room for a basket.
Maybe two.
I mean, I, I'd like it.
Valley View and Cherry River would be in the intersection of both of us.
Well, it'd be...
Twinsburg.
Twinsburg, yeah.
It would sound like a facility yesterday you thought it was eight.
Southwest corner, any one three parts of it.
You put that, that's gonna be formal. At least we don't got a cloud. It's already bad, it's Twinsburg or Hudson, the power line there, it's always something else. I used to work in Hudson there. Yeah, it's...
Well, yeah, that is true.
Yeah, it's another one of those.
Yeah.
And Shane expressed anything?
Uh-uh. Expressed anything to you about the...
I don't think he's concerned about...
There's a little bit of woods there, you know, it is what it is. He understands how property works.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, we all know the power can pass away, so he was here all the time.
So we just won't bring it up?
Don't imagine it, kind of like it doesn't exist.
Cross the street, I'm Twinsburg.
So another thing I wanted to bring up with you guys is...
The cross the street, I'm Valley, is that Twinsburg?
It's, the other side is Hudson, if you keep on going...
Right, because he's got a bunch of property for sale too.
Yes, yeah, they just cleared that lane also, so that they...
So it's one and then the other one sits there for years, okay.
So we're gonna bypass this one. The other thing I want to bring up with you guys is that our, our moratorium on recreational marijuana is up in December, I think. So we need to make a move on that. It's either gonna expire or we need to decide either way. We have finance meetings basically before every other meeting except October tenth, so I'd like to have a discussion about that October tenth. See if we can do like a, like a public meeting before our meeting to get some public input to decide on it. That, that's, you know, we basically have to move, we have to do something. What, so you said that you've, you've taken the liberty of writing up a ordinances regarding recreational, which are in line with...
Largely mirrors our local code for medical.
For medical, so we have that, we can review.
So by do something, you mean we either need to pass the packet of regulations that he's talking about or continue the moratorium?
Can we continue this?
You guys did continue though, yeah, I mean, typ- typically you want to keep moratoriums to about a year, but you can extend it.
What I meant is if we do nothing and the moratorium expires, there's...
You want to have something in place, whether it's outright prohibition for everything or some type of regulation.
Regulation for...
The regulation could be what I've drafted that mirrors the medical code or whatever you want to accomplish.
And it's strictly related to retail establishments opening within the city itself?
Well, I mean, you still have your cultivator processor distributor.
Okay, got it. Sorry, I...
No, it's okay, anyone, yeah, any questions for, for my comment? So yeah, I'd like to have public discussion about that before the tenth, the meeting in October tenth. And then I suppose we can further discuss it, it's, then we would have the November and December meetings to further discuss it or should be, you know, start looking over what you've written?
What'd you guess?
I don't know, I just don't, I want to make sure that we get this done in a timely manner.
Would it hurt for him to distribute that potential legislation?
Can you do that? Can you distribute that so we can look it over?
Sure.
Then maybe we could discuss it amongst ourselves in the work session during the next, before the next meeting. So the next September meeting and then get some public input on it, I suppose, in the October meeting.
Public meeting, I would have some...
Yeah.
Should we say on the top for it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So...
Public hearing?
Yeah.
Not a hearing.
Not a hearing, it's just a public informational meeting, right?
I mean, you can call it whatever you want. It'll be a, it'll be technically a public meeting, but...
Invite the public to speak and give us feedback on it. And I suppose it, you know, I guess we need to decide if we want to vote on it, if we're gonna take three terms to read it. We have to, it would be up, do you know the date in December that it is expired? I mean, does that date...
It would, it would have been the, it would have been the...
First meeting in December last year.
Because you were to cancel the Christmas meetings.
Right, so, well, the question is, would that date, you know, one-year date fall before or after our December meeting this year?
Yeah.
It was the eleventh last year, no, it was the fourteenth last year, so...
The fourteenth?
I can, I'm sure John has a, can you check that for me?
So it'll be the twelfth, the, the meeting will be the twelfth. I mean, our December meeting is on the twelfth, so we want to have a final reading and vote on it.
If we take no action, it goes into place. If we take nothing, okay. So if we take action, we're basically taking, taking action on what we agreed to have done here in Sulla, where it could be sold? I mean, it's up to us.
Or we could take an action that we're imminent.
If we don't take action...
You could potentially restrict state law is what your opportunity is.
But if we do nothing and the moratorium ends, there's no regulation on it?
Right.
Other than state regulations.
Other than state law, right.
It's what the state says.
And I had an opportunity to speak with the mayor of Northville Village today and I asked her if there are having a retail establishment open up over there. And she said that the establishment that's moving in there, you know, gave everyone a tour and really talked to everyone in council and in the administration about what their process is for security, for, basically for security and, and how it's so much more secure than anything, you know, you've ever, you can imagine, you know, more secure than banks, you know, because you can't, you know, anyone could just walk into a bank. You know, at these kind of shops, you have to be buzzed in, all their product and their money is in vaults, they have security guards.
And where was she from?
This is in Northville Village.
Maybe we could have her come and talk about it here, what they're doing.
Yeah.
To put that under consideration, because we want to consider all sides to be fair.
Yeah, well, I could, yeah, I don't know if I want to like put the burden on her to be like, hey, come and tell us all this stuff. She could probably give us information to talk to someone then do it, but then again, her contacts are with a company that's already gonna be established in Northville Village and they're not gonna establish themselves here.
No, but they may give us ideas of, would you do, yes, if we get this, this and this, or...
Right.
Alpha doesn't have any restrictions.
What they end up doing restriction-wise, I think it's in reality pretty uniform across. There was a company, I can't remember, down in Akron that offered an opportunity to come and tour it. And I think those same restrictions that you mentioned or what they implemented, however many years ago for the medical. So you're probably not gonna see a whole lot of differentiation, to be honest.
I can try and look for some literature too, just, you know, to give us a bullet point list of what restrictions they take. One thing that she mentioned that was interesting is when they're transporting product to the store, is that it's all in unmarked cars, so there's no way for anyone just driving down the street to know like, oh, there's a car full of weed over there, let's, let's get them, so. They, they, they've taken a lot of precautions and it's, and it's as safe as, as can be. But still, you know, I'm sure the, the public has, has ideas of what they want. I do know that the issue did pass in Macedonia, I think sixty-three to thirty-seven. So it wasn't overwhelming, but it was a majority that it, that it passed in Macedonia. So start thinking about that, maybe try and look up information yourselves and I'll see if I can get some sort of bullet point list of security. I know that in the first month, there was forty-four million in sales, which is something that you get sales tax from. Forty-four millions in sales across the state, so that's, that's basically would be the draw for us because, you know, we know people can go anywhere they want. They can go to Northville Village, you know, it's not like we're denying people the ability to buy here. It's, you know, the draw for us would be, would be the, the tax money. And this, the question is, you know, do we want to allow something? And we need to understand the safety, safety risks or are they just perceived safety, safety risks? Are there less safety risks? And just something that people will be willing to accept in our community with the, the tax money that, that it could bring in too. So we'll, I'll try and get some information out to you guys and then Mark will send us...
And I have some stuff that you'll probably find useful, so I can send you that to make it a little easier.
All right, any further, and you can always reach out to Jan in Northfield and I'm sure she'd be willing to talk to you about it too. But like I said, I don't, I don't want to burden her with that and it's good to know that it's, you know, there's nothing that, that this company was doing that no one else is gonna be doing it, so. All right, anything further? We have about ten minutes to go, so we will see everyone out there. Oh, you know, should we, should we vote? We haven't voted on canceling.
Yeah, I'm not yet.
So do you guys want to do that, this meeting?
What?
Canceling what?
Canceling the, the holiday meetings.
Yeah.
I mean, the one that falls on Thanksgiving.
Yeah, the one that's on Thanksgiving. You guys are all welcome, but, all right.
Part of our arrangement.
Dave, do you think you can do this?
Yep. I canceled my plans, so I could be here.
All right, so make a motion to cancel the November twenty-eighth meeting.
The November twenty-first? No, I mean, I'm in Nova, yeah.
And then the December twenty-sixth meeting. And then Jan, can you second that motion, please? Okay, thank you very much. So we'll get that taken care of. All right, guys, thank you very much, now you can go.
No lack of-
Good evening. It is September 12th, 2024. It is 7:30 PM. Will Mr. Hoover please call the roll?
Ms. Brand.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Garbus.
Here.
Ms. Tolton.
Here.
Now I ask Chaplain O'Brien to lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we gather here this evening in gratitude for the opportunity to serve our community and seek your guidance in our deliberations. As we convene to discuss the matters that impact the lives of our citizens, we ask for your wisdom to help us make decisions with integrity and compassion. Grant us the clarity to navigate the complexities before us and the courage to act in the best interest of those we represent. We also seek your blessing on our efforts to foster unity and progress in our city. May our conversations be marked by respect and understanding, and may our actions reflect the commitment to justice and equality. Help us to work together with a shared vision for a brighter future and inspire us to lead with a spirit of service and humility. We are grateful for your presence among us and for the strength and resolve you provide in our work. Amen. And now our mayor, the Honorable Nick Mulner, will lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the minutes?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the Thursday, August 22nd, 2024, regular council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A couple of comments? There's a huge crowd here today? Nope, no one?
We're quiet down.
Correspondents from the clerk?
None, sir.
We move the pending our new legislation, starting with ordinance 43.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 43 to be 2024. They're reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. Let's back that up. No, go ahead. I jumped ahead.
Are you doing this for third?
We didn't need a second, so.
Are you doing this for third reading?
Yes, by title only.
So we don't need a...
Oh, okay. An ordinance amending Chapter 505 of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Macedonia regarding cats.
Discussion.
Just to remind everyone, this is an amendment to the Codified Ordinance that basically puts the same onus on cat owners as it does on dog owners. We already have regulations that you need to keep your dog within your yard and properly under your control. The same will go for cats. It also adds an amendment, or it adds an ordinance that makes it a fine to feed feral animal, or feed wild animals, including cats. It's not, feral cats, it does not include birds and other things like that, but we don't want to encourage the feeding of skunks and raccoons and feral cats and to create a more of a feral cat problem. So that is what ordinance number 43 does in another show.
Thank you. And what is your pleasure?
Mayor, I'd like to move that we pass and post according to law ordinance 43, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 43 carries. Orders number 63.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 63, 2024, for its first, second, and third readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Norton's approving the editing and inclusion and amendment of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the Codified Ordinance of Macedonia.
Director Ghadetti.
So the city has both a hard copy of this code as well as a code online because, you know, with the technology how it is, many people access it online. We have it updated once per year now. By passing this on a quarterly basis, we'll now also have the online version updated every three months. So it'll just be more current to reflect what council has done during that period.
Thank you. And what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance number 63, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 63 carries. Ordinance number 64.
I'd like to offer ordinance 64, 2024, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Norton's authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Eagle Abatement LLC for the 9150 Valley View Road demolition project.
Essentially, we went out to bid to demo the building at 9150 for our new service center. This is the, one of the hugest, not hugest, one of the largest steps, bad word, I know. One of the largest steps to move towards getting something going, to get that building moving in the positive direction. So many bids were put out. How many bids do we have, Director Jalati?
Fifteen.
Fifteen bids. Engineer, or the architect's estimate was 800,000. The lowest and best was 245,000. So I think we did well on that, and I'd like to move forward with that.
Are you sure it's the largest?
Enormous.
It's a large step in the right direction.
Regardless.
Oh. What is your pleasure?
Mayor, I would move that we pass and post the hugest ordinance, 64, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance?
We're having a great time.
I know. Pick on Nick Day, it's okay. Order 64 carries. Resolution number 65.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number 65, 2024, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the County Budget Commission, authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying the same to the Summit County, Ohio Fiscal Office.
Director Vares.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an annual housekeeping that sets the rates used to, that the county uses to prepare the property tax bills that will be coming out next year.
Thank you. And what is your pleasure?
I ask that we pass and post according to law, resolution 65, 2024, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Resolution 65 carries. Any other motions or legislative actions?
I move to cancel the November 28th and December 26th meetings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll move right into the mayor's report. First and foremost, I want to recognize that yesterday was 9/11 and take a moment of silence for that, so if you would all give that respect. Thank you. Outside of City Hall here, we do have a beam from the tragedy that took place. Chief Black, when he was still here, was able to procure that and bring that here, and I think it's an amazing thing for us to have, and it's a constant reminder of the things that took place that day. And, you know, in my life, that's one of the things I think about the most of, you know, the things that will always stick in your mind and you'll tell your kids and your grandkids about is that day. And I think the first Iraq war, sitting there with my dad when the bombs were going crazy and, you know, that's something he'll never forget. So definitely keep that on your mind and keep those families in your thoughts and prayers. On the positive note, B&amp;B Theater is open today. A lot of folks in the city, we did a lot of work with that, Director Vares, myself, and many others, to get that thing moving. It was a major project. I believe they told me yesterday that they spent around $7 million to get that up and running. We were able to tour the theaters, get a look at the new facility, and let me tell you, if you like movies, you're gonna love this place. I am blown away. I thought it was absolutely amazing. We had an opportunity to actually watch one of the films in one of the new theaters where the screens are on the side and in front of you, and wow, oh my goodness. You all will love that. So if you have an opportunity to go there, check it out. I mean, they have really good food. You could even have a drink while you're in the theater, not just pop. It's, you know, beer and wine and liquor and all that stuff. So good time. I really enjoyed it. So...
How about the kids?
Oh, and there's a kids' thing in there, too, where a half hour before a movie starts, there's a thing on the side with slides, and they can climb up around and get all the energy out. There's a thing down in the front, and then a few minutes before the movie starts, they have them go back to their seats. No, they can't climb around or run around in there during the film, but I think it's a great idea. There was actually some people there that are big on social media in the area, you know, for kids, and they were taking pictures and posting it on their things to let people know that there's another thing you could do to get your kids out of the house, and it's good, healthy fun. So check it out. It's gonna be a hit. I'm telling you, I think that place is gonna be a major hit around here. And...
Beetlejuice, Beetlejuice.
And it's the first one in Ohio. B&amp;B Theater is the first one in Ohio, so very excited for that.
It's a great place, and I only know that because my daughter-in-law's family lives in Topeka, and guess what's there?
Oh, that's where it's from.
That's the film they've been going to.
Yep.
That's awesome. Yeah, it's from Kansas.
Did you talk about the family?
Oh, and it's a family-run business. So family-owned, all connected, pretty good stuff.
Yeah, check out their website. They have explanations for all the different theaters and...
B&amp;B.com. Very, very specific. Don't go anywhere else but B&amp;B.com. Buy your tickets there.
Yeah, it's a reward, like we used to with the other one. And if I remember right, it was on Channel 19.
Yeah.
It had a big article.
So check it out.
It was cool.
Thank you, Council, for passing the demolition of our new, well, to be our new building for service. I appreciate that. I'm just jumbling up my words. And I'm gonna step a little on Director Chaddick's toes, but Fall Fest is coming up next weekend. I want to point out one simple thing. I'm sure he'll mention this as well, but if you're coming there and you're under the age of 18, you must be accompanied by a parent or guardian to join us at that festival. So just wanted to put that out there now so there's no confusion. More than happy to have everyone there, but under the age of 18, you must be accompanied by a parent or guardian, not an adult, a parent or guardian. So please join us. It's gonna be a good time. I think it's gonna be a hit. And last but not least, please don't drive distracted. Put the phones down, drive the car. I was behind someone the other day, and I'll always give you a story because this one was fun. Not fun, but not cool, I should say. There was a new driver with a sticker on the back that said, "New driver, please watch out." And the light changed, the car didn't move, then when it did start to move, was kind of slowing down, speeding up, swerving a little bit, and she was on the phone. So tell your kids to not do that. Very dangerous. Committee reports.
Parks and Air Commission has our September meeting next Wednesday at 6 o'clock upstairs in the Rec Center. So that meeting is open to the public as usual. If anyone is interested and wants to come join us, that's where we'll end the report. 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Hearing none, we'll go to department reports, starting with Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, we had a new full-time employee maintenance worker start this week. His name's Brian Gregg. He was an independent contractor. Comes to us with a lot of skills as far as renovating, doing things like that, trades-type skills, so that's an exciting thing. He will be working on getting a CDL. He's another person who's done a lot of that type of thing, but not ever had a CDL. I met with Sam Sarre today. That whole process is really coming along. We're really close to being able to go live with our new GPS and cameras in our trucks, get ready for snow season. We're talking about, we're talking about even how a lot of cities are using it for leaf season, too, so we'll be able to track where we are in leaves and eventually have, maybe not this year, we may not start it out the first year, but have a public-facing setup on our website where people can see, you know, where leaf trucks are, where snow trucks are. So that's exciting. Leaf season tentatively set for October 15th to kick off, so our leaf machines purchased are really dragging, like everything else is. So we haven't received the new ones yet, but we are still going through the old ones, making sure they're up to par, and we'll still be using the older ones this year. And then one of the biggest things I'm working on right now is just getting streetlights up and all and running for Halloween. That's a big push, so kind of make a big push for that before Halloween comes, before we know it. End of report.
Will we have the new leaf machines this year?
I thought...
Didn't we order those last year?
I thought we would, but they're telling me no, so it could be like January.
Okay.
I think we ordered them at, what, the beginning of 24th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to remind people, too, you can report streetlight problems on the website. There's a form right on the front page.
Yeah. We did just this week. We did, had some employees come in early when it's still dark out. We did a major, we did a full run through the whole city. So I said, I just want to know what we have out. And so now we have an actual real, you know, we know what we got. It's a lot. I don't want to talk about it. We'll get it.
Thank you. Director Jalati.
Yeah, thank you. Road paving, as part of our road program this year, is substantially complete. Really just need to paint the lines on the last few roads. And Walters Road, as you might remember, is a separate standalone contract. Still need to replace the guardrail on Walters Road, and then the contractor will put down the top coat of asphalt, and that project will be complete as well. End of report.
Thank you. Director Chaddick.
Thank you, Mayor. As you said earlier, Fall Fest will be next weekend, September 21st, 4:30 to 9:30 in Longwood Park. So we're looking forward to that. Please check out our website and social media for all the guidelines for food trucks and beer vendors that will be present. I'm excited to announce that we, for the last couple of weeks, we've been playing games on the new fields in Longwood South that were put in last year. And last week, we know Friday it rained pretty much all night into Saturday morning, and we played soccer and football and had no issues. Everything drained. The fields were nice and playable. Little wet, but still playable. So we were really excited that the project came out good and we're using those fields. The Longwood North Fields just completed this week. We won't use them until next fall, so we'll keep that area shut down. Sugar Bush just got completed last week. A tree project got completed at the end of last week, and we're excited about that because that was the east bank of trees and dead trees, I should say. And Brush got cleaned out. That's a project we've had on our radar for about four years now, so finally got that taken care of. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Director Vares.
Thank you, Mayor. In Councilman Ventura's absence, I'm sure he'd like me to mention that there's a finance committee meeting today. We went over capital items for police, fire, service, and city hall. There'll be another finance meeting at a half hour before caucus for 10:26, or wait, 9:26, and then 10:24, we'll be wrapping up the budget and have first reading for the 2025 budget on the agenda for the 24th of October, which will allow three reads for the budget, October, November, December reading. End of my report.
Thank you. Director Collins.
Thank you, Mayor. 43 helped us tickets. It's the last meeting, major projects, updating and meeting new leaves requirements for the Police Department. Really looking forward to Fall Fest next weekend. It's a really cool event. Hope to see everybody there. Thank you. End of report.
Thanks. Commissioner Monaco.
Thank you, Mayor. The cyber program is winding down. I foresee it to be completed in a couple of weeks, other than some touch-up here and there. September 16th, the Planning Commission is gonna have a meeting. On the agenda, it will be approval for signs at Villa Lago, Volume Salon at 909 East Aurora Road, Dumbesh Jewelry, they are proposing a new sign on the north elevation of the building. There is a new tenant sign seeking approval at 585 East Island Road. And also on the agenda, it's a final site approval for Holiday Inn Express. And there's also a huge addition going on to St. Gregorius Church at 1252 East Aurora Road. September 18th, the BCA is gonna have a meeting. There are two items on the agenda. One is Mr. Coblenz is looking for a 59 unit instead of 58 at Valley Reserve. And the second item is to allow semi-parking at 9260 Valley View Road in a limited industrial zoning. There was an addition at Garter School that was recently completed. It's all landscaped and it's functional. As far as new business, we have some air salons moving in our city. One of them is Color Bar Salon. It's moving from Hudson to 9832 Valley View. Prime Four moved at 911 East Aurora Road. And let's see, there's a plastic processor equipment company moved at 1380 East Island Road. It was an empty building. Also, I'm dealing with Spruzil. There's about four houses left to be built on their development. I'm having an issue now with the illuminating company trying to have the lights turn on. It's getting darker now earlier, and some of the people are complaining, and I'm just, I haven't been able to get anywhere with this company trying to come on. And the poles are all out, but they're just not turned on yet, so I'm working on that. And this concludes my report.
Thank you. Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Our drug-free workplace and annual safety training is winding down. We are prepping for our annual health fair. Information flyers went out today, and we will be holding that along with biometric testing and flu shots on that day. We also are recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we will be raising money at the health fair and doing other things throughout the month to be able to donate to the American Cancer Society. End of report.
Thank you. Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. Very happy to announce, I got a phone call from a bewildered finance director last week, wanting to know why our collections were up so much for EMS. Through the month of August, we have already collected what he had projected we would collect for the year. That's a couple of reasons for that. We raised our rates and Medicare increased their reimbursement. As a reminder to the residents, you will never receive a bill from us. We accept what your insurance company pays. So that's all good stuff, especially with the cost of our equipment going up. We'll help with that. Very happy to announce, Dennis Bosch applied for two grants and assisted Tracy Young, the communications supervisor through Public Utilities Commission of Ohio. They fund a grant program used from their penalties when people have problems, like Royal Chemical. That money, some of that money's coming back to us. There's one for the fire department, which is our annual hazmat refresher of eight hours everyone's required to go through. We have a combination class for damming and diking that we're going to do with our service department, so we can utilize them as a resource in an emergency, which we did use them a little bit at Royal Chemical. So that's a good thing. And then dispatch got one for how to collect and what information is important for hazmat incidents. So that's all really good stuff, and it's somewhere around $35,000 or $40,000 in total for all three of those grants. The other thing is, the City of Cleveland Water Department, they came out, they inspected all of our hydrants we had flushed earlier in the year. We have a lot of them that they are going to replace. I got a phone call from them earlier in the week. They're concerned because we have a lot of residents that have landscaped around their hydrants. They wanted me to remind everyone they are in the right way. They will not call to say they're coming to repair the hydrant or replace the hydrant. If you have plants that you want to save around those hydrants, they suggest removing them when the oops markings appear, and that may take a few months before all these hydrants are complete. End of report.
Thank you. Chief Yakapolich.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, we did a 911 upgrade, giving us the ability to receive text to 911. I'm sure people are familiar with that, so we're moving right along to the next gen and be compliant with everything there. Our civil service testing for police, officer, and dispatcher, they both closed last week, and the Civil Service Commission will be meeting this coming Monday to certify those lists. Also, Sergeant Plez applied for a grant, the Holiday Traffic Safety Grant through the Ohio Traffic Safety Office, and we were awarded that grant. It's just shy of $31,000. It'll be for saturation patrol on holidays and around the holidays, focusing on crash reduction, distracted driving, and impaired driving. End of report.
Thank you. Director Ghadetti. Any unfinished business? Any new business?
I remember it was that we were gonna talk about.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.